Okay, gonna call this regular meeting to order. Again, council, always a pleasure to see you, members of the staff. And now, we add Marty to the members. Thank you, and members of the public, thank you so much for being here. We appreciate you taking the time. Call this meeting to order, and would you take the roll call, please? Russell.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Here.
Councilmember McKay?
Here.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Here.
Vice Mayor Fissa Kelly?
Here.
Mayor Nelson?
Here. We all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I might, Vice Mayor and council, a couple of weeks ago, I know Freddie, councilmember Fissa Kelly, had a wonderful young man that he wanted to introduce to all of us, and talk about some of the great things that he's doing in the community, and the wonderful organizations that are benefiting as a result of the things that he's doing. So if you all don't mind, these are only a couple of minutes before we get started with public comment. Turn it over to you, Freddie, for the introduction.
Yes, what happened, like Jeff said a couple of weeks ago, maybe a little bit longer than that, I got an email from this young gentleman, tell me about, he goes American education in high school. I'm not gonna tell you a lot about him, because I'm gonna bring it here and let you tell about himself. But it is really enlightening to see a young gentleman like this do what he's doing. So, Sugans, if you want to come up, you got the mic.
Good evening, everyone, and I'd like to thank the council for inviting me today. I'm Sugans Cannon, I'm the founding chairman of Chick-fil-A Leadership Academy, and the impact project that we were involved in was making a big difference in the community by helping an organization in southwest ranches called Happy Farm. And, you can go to the next slide. Happy Farm is a unique nonprofit organization. They help people by providing therapeutic horseback riding lessons, and that has a huge impact on people with multiple sclerosis, ADHD, stroke, cerebral palsy, and there's a lot more effects and positive results. And this has been shown by scientific research. And we were motivated to make, I was motivated to make a big impact on a variety of groups in the community, and that's why I chose this project and chose to help Happy Farm. As I said before, they're helping over 20 groups of people. They have a huge variety of animals there, and we really need to make these people independent and productive. And this is only possible with their interaction with animals in the community, and that really rewires their neurological system, and that's what gets them back into the community. And there's a lot of benefits. It helps their cognitive skills, helps their memory, coordination, and the effects range, there are a huge amount of effects coming from this animal-assisted learning and human-animal interaction. It's a great thing to see. The, we chose to run a fun day because I wanted to purchase a tent for Happy Farm to make sure that the volunteers and the disabled people there had a shade. And this was important so that they, the tent, so we decided to buy a Valance tent, and we purchased it from California. We had a variety of events at the fun day. We had free food for everyone, and there was a martial arts demo, and they had, everyone had a lot of fun with the animals. You can, you can do the images first. Okay. So I, for the ribbon-cutting ceremony, I invited Vice Mayor Fissa Kelly and our school principal, Mrs. Blum, and it was a public-private partnership. And this really brought everyone together from the public sector and the private sector. And it was great that we had support from both sides for this event. We also had a fun hayride, so everyone had a great time. And we had pony rides for everyone, so the kids also had a great time. And that was the main thing, helping the kids in the community understand that animals really make a big difference in a lot of people's lives. This was the ribbon-cutting ceremony. This was our, this was my team from Chick-fil-A Leadership Academy. So that's, that's a picture of the tent right there. That's the Valance tent that we purchased for $700. And we also had a lot of fun games, such as treasure hunt in the hay. And a variety of people from our Chick-fil-A Leadership Academy actually chose to play music. I played violin, and... Yeah, we're back to the beginning. The, the next thing is the, a video of the ribbon-cutting ceremony.
I was there with the, that is the principal of your school, right, there to help us cut the ribbon?
Yes. So these were all the volunteers that helped that day, and I'd like to extend a thanks to the community for bringing the volunteers. And this is a video of the ribbon-cutting ceremony. Is, is the volume on the bottom?
Yeah, it's up.
No, not that volume, the one near the time on the right, on the bottom right corner of the computer.
Looks like we got some technical issues. Sugans, I think that we, we get it, and you're a wonderful young man, and great, great job with your event and what transpired. And I want to tell you that you certainly are making a difference. And on behalf of this council, we recognize your efforts and appreciate all that you're doing. And those are special kids, and you're making a different, a difference in their lives. And thank you very, very much.
You're welcome. I just have one more thing, Mayor Nelson. The next project that we're embarking on is building a ramp so that the disabled people can have a, can easily get on the horses. And this is important for their recovery and their improvement in their condition. And the budget for this project is $1,900. So I'd really appreciate if you could all make a donation, and this would make a big impact on their community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
My donation. Yeah, it was really enlightening, and I was able to go out there. They're located in Rolling Oaks by the people right there on 178. And they bring these kids out there. Some of them are ill and different, and some even adults. And they put them on horses, and they have all kinds of animals that they can pet. It's really a good thing in helping these people. And I really, to me, to see a young gentleman like this take his time and try to help them.
Ladies and gents, please, we can hear you all the way up here. Thank you.
But anyway, I want, I want to thank you for what you're doing and keep up the good work. Thank you very much, council.
Great job. And again, you're making a difference. Okay, item number three, public comment, Russell.
Mayor, the public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Speakers are only allowed to speak on non-agenda items. I see some of the cards we got tonight are on agenda items, so just want to make sure everyone realizes that. I'll call the speakers, and if you could please keep coming up. Joanne Hollingsworth, Astronite, Debbie Green.
Thank you again. Good evening, council administration, town attorney. I'm Marty. My name is Joanne Hollingsworth. I'm on Southwest 199th Avenue, and I've come this evening to talk to you about something I think is very special and important for the town. I have lived in this town for many, many, many years before we became a town in SWR 2000, which was amazing. Well, we are now in SWR 2015. And if anyone here cares for the viewing residents' care, or the council cares, you would want to do what we did years ago and have a big, huge town birthday party and parade. This is a very important date, and we haven't had a town party and parade in many, many years. And discount tickets to a Marlins game don't count. So, I would like the council to consider this. I would like our residents here to consider it, and our viewing residents. And let's get a 2015 Big Bash Birthday Party for Southwest Ranches. Thank you.
Astronite, Debbie Green. Mary Kay Chapels.
Astronite, 5480 Southwest 170th Avenue. I've just come to support Joanne and her desire to have another birthday party. We want a parade, we want everything. We should have this 15 years going. And we haven't had anything significant for years. So I think we should commemorate our beginnings this year. One of the problems we had in former years is having it in June. It's usually rainy. So maybe we can decide to find another time cooler and drier where we should have a birthday party. Thank you.
Debbie Green, 199th Avenue. I'm speaking on just a traffic safety issue out west. It's, it seems that a lot of the reds, residents, I think it's more residents than other traffic, but it seems that a lot of them think those stop signs from like 186th Avenue West, they think those stop signs are to stop the traffic coming eastbound to say, hey, you gotta stop because we gotta turn. There's so many people coming out, they do not stop at those stop signs. And out west, it's just, it's more of a safety issue because that's where that, Griffith's the only area of the town where Griffin Road is only one lane. So when these people just come right on, well, you're going at full speed, and they just don't stop at their stop sign, come right on the road, there's nowhere for you to go. So I'm just asking for council, administration, anyone who can maybe pass the word along and maybe ask Davy to maybe monitor those areas out there. I understand every street wants that, you know, everyone to stop and to go, but out west, just because it is that one road, it, it does have more of a safety issue because there really is nowhere else to go. Thank you.
Mary Kay Chapels, followed by John Eastman, followed by Barry Nunzick.
Mary Kay Chapels, if, if we could have a party, I would like to see us recruit all the volunteers we can to do the planning of it and the whole shebang. That's the way we used to do it, and I think that it would be a blast. I think we'd have a lot of participation. And the parade, we could have right there in Rolling Oaks. And we don't have to go, we used to go through the town, down Griffin Road, and then up, and it really made for congested mess. If people wanted to watch, it really was a problem. And now that Griffin Road is four lanes, it would be even worse. So if we just had the parade in Rolling Oaks, and we maybe went from one point, either from Old Sheridan to the barn, you know, that, and then at the barn congregate for the party, we could do that. And there's plenty of room there for people to park their horse trailers and so on. So I don't think it would be a big problem. But I hope we can have a really blowout party. We haven't had one in a long time. Thank you.
John Eastman, I think you're next. Who's after John? And Barry Nunzick.
Hi, John Eastman, 188th Avenue. Just an update on the FPL. The town, town engineer and I are gonna meet with him, not this coming week, but the following week. So hopefully, we'll get a schedule going for replacing the wiring on 188th Avenue. I think a town party is long overdue. Let's try to do one sometime this year, but the point of June rain, yeah, June's not a good time. So coordinate it with the HOAs, you know, because we can help out a lot. Couple other items I guess we're gonna be talking about later on, so I'll be back.
After Barry, the final speaker will be Joel Mainz.
Good evening, gentlemen. Barry Nunzick, 163rd and Sterling Road. I was on your fire advisory board. I got this nice advisory board handbook, which actually made me laugh out loud. Well, on the, on the fire, in the advisory book? I'm trying to, keep moving on you.
Take it out.
Anyway. Right, anyway, we have this advisory board handbook, and as I was going through it, I see this provision on page 21. It says, "Board members who have business or financial interests who have relatives, close, or close friends which would stand a profit from a decision, obviously, should not participate in the decision-making process and should abstain from voting." And then if you go over to section eight, it has more items about who should and who should not be on advisory boards. And on, I keep reading this, and then I know we have two people on the fire advisory board that have family members that work for the volunteer fire department. To me, it just doesn't add up. If you get a chance, read that. Anyway, other than that, I did some research. I want you guys to know, there's some good news. I checked all the fire runs. As you know, the volunteers no longer run east of 172, or were 112 runs. Station 68 and Station 91 has been able to run all of their calls without the help of the volunteers. So all that time that the volunteers were running all the way over to Flamingo Road to help out those stations was just a waste of time. So, shows the chief, Monapoli, was correct. The Davy Fire Department can provide the proper service without volunteers.
No, Mr. Mainz?
All right, that concludes public comment. Item number four, any board members here with any reports?
I'm the chair of the parks board, and if you notice, the current board members I've listed. And we lost a very strong member, which was Manny. And the balance on that board is not really representation of the whole town. So what I want to do is have three members in each one of the districts and leave, there's four members, leave the four members in Rolling Oaks. So I asked for some volunteers. It's been really hard to get them out in country estates. And I asked Nancy Hartman, she said, fine, she'd really like to do it. The idea is to get a good representation because the parks cover the whole town. Even though we have a park in each one of the districts in, we also have roadsides, trails, a lot of different things that we take care of beyond just the parks. And I think a lot of these decisions need to be made by the whole town, which would be represented by an equal balance. We needed an oddball, so it needs 13. And the one that I'm, I have two more that signed up for Green Meadows. Green Meadows has only had one representative all along. And we needed one more in Doug McKay's territory, and we need one more in Steve Bright Cruz's. So if two of you would please work on it, I did call someone in Sunshine Ranches. He told me he would get back to me, and I haven't heard. He thinks he's just really overloaded and too busy. But I don't think anybody is too busy to sit for an hour and a half. I really try to move it along and help with these parks and trails and make it happen. And not just sit there and not be involved, and then criticize what happens after it's all through. I mean, we debate a lot, and it's important to have a lot of input. Most of these boards are only five members. And I think that it's important to have a bigger group having their input into it. So please, try to get two more from those areas, and then we'll have a pretty good, solid representation all the way across the board in each.
Provided everybody shows up.
Yeah.
That's a lot of people to coordinate.
Believe it or not, we've had a pretty good attendance. We did have one that sat on the board right from the beginning, and she moved out of the area, actually, she moved out of the state. And that was Leslie Feely, and of course Manny was on it all along, and he passed away. So I know that they've all been active. Some miss once in a while, but most of them are there all the time. So please, try to put those two people on there for me so we have a good representation. Thank you.
Any other board members?
Noel Hollingsworth, Chair of the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Board. Two years ago, the council set forth to the comp plan to rewrite the farm ordinances for the, those that did not have ag-exempt properties because of the change of the state law. We're finally coming to a conclusion on that. It's taken way too long to do it. But we're at this point where the Comprehensive Plan has a budget, but it does not include ordinances that you address to us. And we have an expense that we now have to put forward. And that is the architectural drawing and plans for the barn, which will be part of the farm ordinances, non-commercial farm ordinances, and available to those individuals. We went out and got three comparison pricings on that. And we came back with $5,000 for a set of the plans, which the town will own. And there may be some legal back-and-forths between the architect and the town as to the final piece of contract, as to the ownership, et cetera, et cetera. And we're very specific about what we want. That dollar amount is $7,500 that we're asking the council to approve. And it's a very reasonable amount, we believe. We know that it's going to be $5,000 for the plans, which the town will own and be available to the residents of the town. $2,500 we'd like is a buffer in case there's some legal expenses or some other expenses that have to take place so we don't have to come back a second time to the council. Not that we're, it's going to be used. We're very frugal in that manner, and always have been. So we'd like for you to go forth and give authority to the administration to go out and enter into the negotiations for those plans. And we can get those plans and then bring them back to the council and put together a package that would be available at a reduced cost permitting-wise for the town. What this basically is, if you'll remember way back, and short-term memory loss and long-term memory loss is all, we all got on this, so I have a lot of notes. We wanted to do a reduced cost because the price right now, since the state law changed, to build a barn permitting-wise is about $5,000. That's what it costs in permits to build a barn. And if you got two stalls and a tack room, or three stalls, straight line, you're probably gonna have about $2,000 in materials to build it, maybe $3,000. And you got $5,000 in permit fees, which is ridiculous as we look at. And that is not what our town stands for. So what we have done, we have negotiated with our various contractual entities that we do business with. And we have come up with a set of numbers for everything except the initial review of the barn by CAP, cap. That, they don't know what it's going to be until they look at the plans, which I found interesting. But that is the only number that has not been put forth. Michelle Milgram's office came back with a very low number as to what their costs would be. And those have now been transferred over to Town Hall and Robert's office. And he is responsible now with that part. And also, the inspection fees, we already know what those are, and also what the fees are going to be for the town as to how much it costs, the town time, et cetera, to put it together. So that it is cost-returnable to the town. And we also need to put a price on the barn for the, for the individuals to get the plans that will be legal and will meet state law in the town. And that is going to be your decision at the time when we come forward. But right now, what we need to do is to get the set of plans from the architect, and that is a $5,000 fee. And we'd like $2,500 additional, just in case there are legal considerations in negotiations, and also any other considerations. So would appreciate that, since it's not in the Comprehensive Plan budget line item. This is something separate, and something that the council has addressed to us to take care of. And it's finally coming to a fruition. And at our next meeting, we should be taking care of the cleanup ordinance so all the language will be correct within our code, throughout our code. And we hope to be able to finish that up and get that to you guys so we can start wrapping this in a bow. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
May I add just something, however brief? I think Mr. Hollingsworth did an outstanding job of expressing or laying out where we are with that. The dollar amounts that are being requested by the, by the Comprehensive Planning Advisory Board fall within my limits. However, it's something that hasn't been budgeted. So I get a consensus from council. It's certainly something we can move forward with them.
Take care of it.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay. Okay. All right, thank you all.
I have one question, Mayor, if I may.
Absolutely.
Noel, as far as the pricing on the two, four, and six-stall barn, you guys are gonna bring that back later, right?
What we're looking at is a two-stall and a tack room, or a three-stall barn, straight-line stall. And that is going to be the boiler plate. And if you want that, then it'll be a reduced. And if you want that, then it'll be a reduced cost. Otherwise, you have to go through regular permitting and review, and that would be somewhere in the range of $5,000.
Okay, so it's only going to be one option, not two or three or four options?
No, it's not two or three or four. I would love to have that, but it's just not cost-effective for us.
Okay, any other board members wish to comment? See, and item number four is complete. Item number five, council member comments. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick comments. Gay, I am working on the member for your board, and we're going to bring it up during the next HOA meeting there at Country Estates and also talking to some other folks, so...and hopefully in the next couple of weeks, I'll have somebody that we can recommend for that. The town party, sounds great to me. I mean, that's a beautiful thing. I know it's a lot of work. I think, you know, it's a town party, and I think we, as a town, need to make it happen. I don't think it's...the administration will help, I'm sure, but, you know, I like the idea of all the HOAs pitching in, you know, and let's work on this together, let's make it great, and let's have a great celebration. I think it's a fantastic idea. The other comment is just the...I wanted to comment on the traffic issue, Debbie, that you brought up. I know I've had a couple of conversations with Davy Police on that. I think other folks have too. I think we're going to see some enforcement coming along the line, so it's in the works. Thank you.
Just a couple of things. Gay, we've got a couple of other people to share with you for your addition on your board. And the birthday party deal, along...those of you that haven't been involved from years ago, we had floats and cars and horses and you name it, all kinds of stuff. Great fun, a lot of good times, so definitely on board with doing that. Hopefully, everybody used to frown that we didn't do it on the birthday date of the town. I think it's more important to pick a weather or a better weather day. So, don't come slam us when we pick a different day that's not the birthday, to at least have a birthday. So...but I'm on board with that, so thank you.
Yeah, actually, I have a meeting every Thursday of the month of the month, and it's usually followed with a council meeting. So I went today to MPO, that's a metro planning organization, which has...every town has a representative to the board. Actually, there's something like 30, 30-some towns represented at the board. At the present time, only 19 people have a vote at that board. At present time, we don't have a vote. If all people are there, like today, I wouldn't have had a vote today, I don't think, but because there was something like 21 or 22 people. But even though I don't have a vote, I can talk there at the meeting and this thing. And one thing that came up today is, again, the 2040 plan, which is what we plan to do on roads. And two items that appeared on the map that concerned me was 30 and 22. 22 is to southwest 180th Avenue, add from two lanes, make it four to six lanes. When I seen that, I couldn't believe it. I said, you know, that's a local street in our town. I don't know where those things come from. So soon as the meeting broke, I got ahold of Lois Wexler, who's on the board also, and I said, "Lois, where did this come from?" She said, "Freddy, I don't know. It surprised me when it came back to the council meeting." But they...I can't find out. I'm going to try to find out some information on it, but it's ridiculous. I mean, in my personal opinion, I don't know anybody that lives...is in favor of a four-to-six-lane road on a road that goes, you know, nowhere. It's ridiculous. But I...but actually, I can...in line here, it says it's 9.7 is the cost, but it's 2026 to 2030, so I don't think we have to worry today or tomorrow on it. But anyway, it's good that we get these things way out so we can start fighting them early.
Freddie, they're drunk. These people are drunk. They're out of their mind. Really, they're not sane.
Yeah, well, actually, they, you know...but anyway...
Do we need to send them a motion or create a motion to come forward with something to help fix this?
Well, I started argument...I started it at the meeting, anyway, and they come back and said...I told them, you know, because a couple of things that I was opposed to, because one of them was 184th Avenue is also on here. So I brought that up, and they said, "Well, what have you...what do you people think?" I said, "Well, we passed a resolution that if 184th went through, it had to be at least a two-lane road. We would not support a four-lane road at all." But I think, Steve, you didn't... Steve, didn't you make a motion prior to that that we would want a two-lane road? In other words?
Yes.
Because I asked Andy, were you able to locate it? Were we able to locate it?
Oh, no, I don't think there was a formal motion. I think it was a consensus of the council. I think we looked for the motion, and it was not...
Well, I think what we need to do is make a motion because when I brought it up, they said, "Well, did y'all pass a motion?" And I said, "A resolution," and I said we did. I'll correct.
Yeah, I thought we did until we researched it and it looked like it wasn't there.
Then I'll state that we did it because I'm sure of it, just because we can't find it, but I remember distinctly doing it.
Yeah, I know you talked about it.
Yeah, I think that's what it was. I think it was part of the comp plan. We discussed it there. We voted on the comp plan, but it was not a separate resolution on its own. But I mean, I would, if we need one, I certainly would propose to do it.
Because right away, they threw back me, "Well, did y'all pass a motion?" And Lois asked me, "Did y'all pass a motion?" And I thought we did, but I'll correct that. But in the meantime, I know I've looked up mine, and the only thing I could find back when we passed a resolution back when John was here, that we seek funding on 184th Avenue. That's the only thing I could find that we passed, and I had any copies of. But I would need that.
Right. I think we want to be just careful how we word it, but to make sure...basically, the wording is that we wouldn't...we don't support any road above a two-lane road on 184th. Not to say that we're, you know, at this point, moving forward with two-lane, but we don't support anything larger than two lanes.
Yeah, okay, so...
We have to be careful how we word it because we don't want, you know, we would like to be able to do it unanimously.
I think in the near future, we need to do that. I don't have a meeting until next month. We have it once a month, but I think we need to take care of that to make sure that we get it. But actually, like I say, some of the things that come up here, I don't know where they come from. According to what I talked to Lois, they have to go before Broward County first before they even come to us. But anyway, luckily, I'm there most of the time. I get them, and I get to hear what they're going to be. But that's...I think that's all that happened today, and that's all I got.
Thanks, Freddie. And then just for the audience confirmation, this is a time period, it's 2026 through 2030. While it's not imminent, we do have some time. It's not something that's going to happen tomorrow. Right. No, that one's 2026 to 2030, southwest 180th, four to six. Thanks for bringing that to our attention, Freddie. Am I reading the wrong thing?
There was another item under...I don't know if I brought it up, but I think it was item...let's see, it was 10. On item 10 is to make...change Griffin Road, that's east of I-75, from two lanes. It says add two lanes from four to six. They want to increase... We had fought that, if you remember.
We did.
And we won it, and they put in only four, but they left the median there, so it's going to be very easy to make it six. So it's something else that we need to keep a fire underneath and keep it there. So, like I say, is these things are not decided today or tomorrow. Like I say, some of them are 15, 20 years from now, but we don't want to wait till then. The time to stop it is now, get it before it even gets into the design stages. And that's all I got.
Thanks, Freddie. And just for the records, Keith is absolutely right. Not 2026, 2031 is when the time period that they have it scheduled. Gary?
I'm good, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, I don't have any comments. That concludes council member comments. Item number six, legal comments.
Sure, a couple of things, Mayor, Council. On March 27th, the town has a motion for summary judgment in its litigation with Pembroke Pines. It's cross-motions. That will be heard at 2:00. It's open to the public. Anyone interested in coming is more than welcome to attend and to watch. It's in room 1070 of the courthouse, Judge Phillips, at 2:00 on March 27th. In addition to that, we...Andy and I had the opportunity this week, and I'm going to bring it up because I see the 2040, to meet with the owner of the Downey Platte. Those of you who remember, Downey is the property that's generally located on Griffin Road in the future 184th area, but they are one property in, which means that there's a nursery that's sort of in front of them on that intersection of Griffin and where 184th would be. As a result of the fact that they have no access to their property, they've been working for at least a year to try to figure out how to access their property. I sent you all an email earlier this week that the county finally agreed to allow them to have access off of Griffin Road until one day, if 184th is ever built, then they would maintain an access point on 184th and then close potentially their access on Griffin. One benefit to the town in having them on Griffin is they're going to actually build a U-turn area that the county is requiring them to build, because right now, when you're in that segment of Griffin Road, which was commented on before, which is narrow one-way, there's no real way to make a U-turn there. You have to actually turn into one of those streets, turn around in one of those streets to come back out. So they will build the U-turn at around 184th, it's between 184th and 185th, to enable cars to come back around so their residents can come back around into the Downey Platte. The item will be before you, most likely in your April agenda, no, excuse me, May agenda, I think is when they're trying to get before you. Because the county commission goes on recess in the summer, what they've asked us is if we would provide them with a letter of no objection, which we've done in the past, to enable them to process their plan with the county simultaneously with that of the town. You obviously will review it first, and if you don't approve it, it doesn't go to the county, but at least enables them to go through the process of submitting to both governmental entities to try to save time for them because they've waited a long time for this. If you don't object to that, that's our intent unless we hear otherwise. The second thing on that property is the town, when they were originally going to deal with 184th, was dealing with the Army Corps of Engineers as it related to the canal because the canal area there created an issue with the Army Corps. Now that they're not disturbing 184th, the town no longer has an interest in dealing with the Army Corps of Engineers as it relates to this project. So unless anyone objects otherwise, we're going to tell Army Corps that that's no longer an issue because the property is not on 184th. For those of you who are curious, the county is still requiring the property owner to give it money as if it were going to construct its portion of 184th, which they will hold in this bank till 2031, 2040, to help fund, you know, potentially its construction. So they actually have to pay for their segment of the road now for 25 years from now. So that's the present story on Downey. It will come back before you, but I just wanted to give you a heads-up of where that was at. Next meeting, just because I didn't bring it, this meeting, we got the official list from the Office of the Inspector General of all the complaints this year that were made by people against you all and the town. That list came out. I'm happy to tell everyone that the town was found not to be in any violation of any ethic rules at all of the county or the state. There were a lot of very interesting complaints, and I will announce the list of residents who complained and what their complaints were and what the findings were at the next meeting if you choose to hear. And then the final issue, and it's just probably a good note for the town, that there are a lot of applications coming in for mitigation of code enforcement liens. I've seen a massive influx, which means properties are selling really quickly in the town. You know, we have maintained, unless we hear otherwise from you, that only with cause we are to reduce the liens to a maximum of a 30% discount. We get every single day, in fact, to today, the demand to appear before the council to plead why they should get a further reduction. Although they're buying a short sale, they still feel that the town should give in as well. We continue to tell the residents that that is not the will of the council. The will of the council is only a legal standard of good cause for the reduction up to 30%. If your opinion has changed at all beyond that, please advise. If not, we're sticking to what the town's code says now, which is on point from your resolution that you passed some time ago. Other than that, we have no further legal comment.
Thank you, Keith. That concludes item number six. Item number seven...
Mr. Mayor, a point of information on your previous talks about 184th on the Comprehensive Plan Transportation Policy 1.2G. All existing and future trafficways and local streets within the town of Southwest Ranches other than artillery roads bordering on the town, Griffin, Sheridan, US 27, Flamingo. Proposed 184th Avenue and the existing four-lane section of Griffin Road shall be constructed and maintained as two-lane facilities. However, it is the policy of the town of Southwest Ranches that streets and roads wider than two lanes are inconsistent with the town's rural lifestyle and character and likely to thwart efforts to reduce greenhouse gas emissions from transportation sector and are therefore strongly discouraged. Therefore, the town shall continue to advocate for changes to policies of other units of government that would result in additional roads wider than two lanes through the interior of the town and jurisdiction. This shall not affect the town's responsibility to enforce right-of-way reservations per Broward County Transportation's map. Also, I was handed a resolution on 184th Avenue that was pulled from the November agenda that you may want to reinstitute. Thank you.
Mayor, one other additional note, I just want to mention about another meeting that Andy and I had since the last council meeting. We have been actively working, as you all are well aware, to prevent the need for residents to be required to test their wells or be required to hook up to neighboring water supply, whether it be Sunrise Pines, Cooper City even in some cases. Andy and I have concluded with Broward County. Broward County has officially advised us that they have zero jurisdiction over this issue and that despite the county law to the contrary, they can enforce it and we should ignore it. Basically, Andy, that's basically what they said. So, as a result of that, we only have two factors left. One is Sunrise, to make sure they're on board with the county's determination. Andy and I are working currently on a meeting with Sunrise to make sure they understand where we're and the county are at. And then the final meeting will be with the Health Department to advise them as well. And once we're done with those two remaining ones, we're done. Sorry for the delay, but Broward County took an incredibly long time to get to that point. But we're hopeful that Sunrise will be faster.
Mayor, can I ask the attorney a question?
Absolutely.
Keith, if they decide, even if they came in here and put water lines in our town, wouldn't the town have the authority to say if you had to hook up or not? Wouldn't it be our decision?
It's our...yes and no, okay? The state of Florida has a law that says that if you're in what's known as a service area, then you are required to hook up, okay? So what our argument is, in the CCA Pembroke Pines case, the judge ruled that the town of Southwest Ranches is not in a service area. And as a result of that ruling, we're able to now go to the state of Florida and say, "Since we're not in a service area, you know, no one has to hook up and no one has to test." So as long...we now have Pembroke Pine saying, "You're not our service area." So it's our legal belief that once Sunrise also concurs, "We're not your service area," then 100%, the residents will not be able to...will not be required to hook up. because the law requires you to be in a service area to hook up.
Good news. Okay. Any administration comments, item number seven.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. First of all, you'll notice that the town engineer isn't here tonight. That's because I had him on special assignment today. Cleed attended the South Florida Water Management District Board Meeting up in West Palm Beach to go on record and let them know during their public participation, during their agenda today, that the town would have interest in the parcel to the west of Broadway. So I had reached out to them last week, and while it was originally their intention to sell it, I think they realized they may or may not be able to sell it. So it was very important that we went on record with them. So we talked about some of the things that we might be able to do with that, that we have not budgeted for that purchase. We were clear with them from that standpoint. But, but...
We're here.
There's a long way to go, but we wanted to let them know now, right at the beginning of that process, that we were here and that we had interest. So we'll see how that plays out. I'll certainly keep you all, you know, apprised as the situation develops. I do have some good news to share with you. And for anybody here or watching who has had to go over to Weston to go to CAP to pull a building permit, we're gonna be changing that. As of April 1st, Lisa from CAP will be, will be working here in Town Hall. So for any of our residents who need to pull a building permit, need building permit information, they'll be able to come here for Town Hall. So it'll be kind of one-stop shopping for building permits, zoning, and engineering. So I think that's gonna provide some very, some very nice conveniences to our residents, so we're looking forward to getting her in here. She's been with CAP for, I think, nine years. She's very familiar with Southwest Ranches, so it's not like we need to get her up to speed. She'll just be here and be able to serve our residents from this location. So we're looking forward to that. We're very excited about that. I do want to point out to you that this is our last weekend with Luke's Landscaping. Our new vendor... Thank you. Our new vendor starts on Monday. And just as certainly a reminder, that when we put that contract into place, one of the things we did was gave them some additional upfront 30 days to do a lot of cleanup along Griffin Road. So starting next week, that process will begin over the next 30 days. I think our residents are gonna see a notable improvement in Griffin Road and how the landscaping along Griffin Road is maintained. And we're looking forward to, you know, very long and mutually beneficial relationship with Prestige Landscaping, so I just wanted to give you a heads-up on that. And last but not least, I did want to talk about the Chili Cook-Off, which seems to have slipped away from everybody this evening. First of all, I want to congratulate Councilmember Jablonsky for his overall first-place win. However, don't get ahead of yourself. As you may recall from last year, we have the Council Cup. And so this is a direct head-to-head competition, members of the council who competed in the Chili Cook-Off, which were councilmembers Jablonsky and Bright Cruz. And in a poll of my highly, highly unscientific and unofficial group, we actually had a tie. So for 2015, we have co-champions, Steve Bright Cruz and Gary Jablonsky. Congratulations. On that note, Mayor, completes my report.
You can display that in your trophy case Monday through Wednesday, and then Gary gets it Thursday through Sunday.
You know, I gotta make a comment that when, when the other guy actually won the overall competition, to have my name on the cup, I just chalked it up to mercy and compassion, okay? Thank you very much.
Ah, great stuff. Okay, that concludes item number seven, administration comments, item number eight.
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, expressing the council's desire to establish the Town of Southwest Ranches Neighborhood Safety Grant Program for fiscal year 2014 through 2015, providing for application requirements, approving an additional 2014, 2015 expense not to exceed $40,000 for promotion of safe neighborhoods, approving a fiscal year 2014, 2015 budgetary appropriation from the general fund, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Russell.
Mayor, Keith? Yeah, sure. This matter originated with Councilmember Bright Cruz. And I want to explain, because I think it got a little bit confused in seeing a lot of people here tonight on the items. So I just want to explain what you're voting on tonight and what you're not voting on. Councilmember Bright Cruz asked me to determine a legal way for communities, and of course, he may have had certain ones in mind, but it was a general question, how communities could obtain funds from the town to enable them to create safer areas in a safer neighborhood. And through that discussion, we came up with the idea that it would be exactly the same way we did it when communities in the town were looking for signage and art in which we did a grant situation. We gave Rolling Oaks money for its entryway sign. We did other things with Country Estates, so, and Sunshine Ranches. So, you know, essentially, when we were going through this, we said, okay, let's create a mechanism akin to what we did when we did the signage issues and the art, and do it for safe neighborhoods and come up with a dollar amount that the town could potentially apply to enable neighborhoods, not just one neighborhood, but neighborhoods to apply to the town. It would be solely up to the Town Council whether or not to award the funding or not to enable safe elements added to that particular community. This was a general item. So the item before you today is general. It enables the process by which any association, whether it be Rolling Oaks, Country Estates, Griffin 345, which is here tonight, any association to apply to the town to get funds to enable them to help increase the safety of their communities. Tonight is just the implementation resolution. If it is adopted, then the, it would go into effect, and the applications would then come back before the town for consideration. This is not just for one community. This is a general grant opportunity for all the communities. Turn it over to you for discussion and consideration.
Thank you, Keith. And just one clarifying question, Andy or Keith, who would decide, who would get approved for grants? And I read it, and I probably missed it, but I didn't see that in there.
That would be a council decision, Mayor.
Okay, so ultimately it would come to us, okay. All right, very good. Okay, council? Steve?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I do appreciate the opportunity to be able to bring this item forward and discuss it. I can't explain it any better than Keith already has. Certainly, there are, you know, some particular areas that we want to make progress on that this is dependent upon. And we, you know, we need to have something like this in place to do some things within our town. And so, I, you know, I think it's important that we at least have this element in place. I'm looking forward to hearing feedback from the rest of the council, get their thoughts on it, and understand where we are. I brought this up to the council on a number of occasions and to kind of prepare and so that hopefully everybody's had time to think about it. And so I'm looking forward to hearing that feedback from the council and also from the residents that are here tonight, so that we can get a good, good overall view on where we are.
Mayor, if I may, we don't have a motion.
Absolutely not. I'll make a motion to approve.
Certainly for, I don't have any problem passing the... Don't need for a second. I don't, I'll make a motion for a second. Again, we have a motion and a second, because I want to hear what everybody has to say as well. I've got some thoughts with regards to this. What I'd like to do now, council, if there's anybody here that'd like to speak on this item, we just ask you to keep it to the two minutes, please.
New Hallingsworth, 199th Avenue. Number one, I am not in favor of this. The, it is way too much money in this. But number two, if you are going to approve it, I think it is definitely missing some ideas that need to be within it. One, it shall not be used to create a closed gated community. Two, shall not be used for regular maintenance. Three, all grants must be approved by resolution by the Town Council at a regular meeting. I did not see that in this at all. Needs to be in there. And four, shall but not be used to deny access to pedestrians or equestrians. Those are very important ideas within this. We've had the fight before on gated communities. And if this is used to build a gate somewhere, you must have a unanimous vote to put it forth. That is already in your code. Having said these items, let me reiterate, I am not for this. We have the Community Beautification Grant, which I believe is more than adequate. For I've looked at, and I know that the first application would be for gates. So I looked up what arm gates cost. A single arm gate is $4,000. So if you have one coming in, one going out, that's $8,000 plus installation, which is probably another $5,000, nowhere near the $40,000. I do not want to build gated community gates. Rott iron pieces of whatever for somebody. If we're gonna put a gate up, we, we fund the one-arm wood gate, one-wood arm gate, and whoever else can get a grant from somebody else are tax themselves to death and build whatever they want. But I think it should be only the bare minimum that we install for that, because I am not for gates at all within the town. Thank you.
And again, this, this grant program isn't any, it isn't for any specific project. It's just a mechanism to fund a potentially safety project. So just want to make that clear for the record. I don't know if Keith did that, but again, just want to make that clear for the record.
Astronaut 5481, 78th Avenue. Mayor and council, we know the genesis of this. You're saying it's not for one project. It's begun because they want to put a gate in a private community. We decided when we started this town not to have any gates in here. We let the horse through the gate by having that Ranch Estates have a gate. They paid for their gate. There's another private community wanting to have a gate. They should pay for their gate if we allow them to have a gate. But we do not need gates in this town. I understand the problems they have, and if they have the one-way in like Rolling Oaks, they can have the one-way in, one-way out. But I don't see us paying for a private gate, and that's what this is all about. You can dress it however you want and say it's for general things. This is how it started, this is how it's gonna end. So I believe, I'm not supporting this one at all. I think we should have no more gates. Thank you.
Joanne Hallingsworth, 199th Avenue. First of all, let's call it the way it is. This is a cute little way to get money for a private road and a private community to get funding for a gate. No matter what you say, that's exactly what this started out as. Another thing, I am not for this at all, and it is way too much money. But you have it for homeowners associations to be able to get this. Let me tell you, there are not mandatory homeowners associations, 99% of them in this town. You have other residents and other streets that are not that way. But maybe they get signatures from the majority of their street, and they want to apply for this. They would not be allowed under this, because you have designated this for homeowners, specifically for a private road. No matter what you say, that's why this was brought up, a way to get them funding for their gate, for a private road. This is not anything that was done for the rest of the town. This was done and initiated to get them something that they should be paying for themselves. So I am not for this. I am not for it going just to homeowners associations if you choose to pass this, and it is way too much money. And the $5,000 beautification grant should be more than enough to suffice for anyone in this community. Thank you.
Ophelia Alada, and I live in Griffin 345. And I would like to clarify that Griffin 345 did not initiate this. We did not request a gate to be built for us. We are trying to be good neighbors, and we're trying to help 188, 186, and 185 with the traffic issues. What we cannot do is we cannot accept more liability on our roads because they are private, and we cannot accept more costs in maintaining our roads by opening us up and allowing more traffic that is not part of our neighborhood. As you all know, we got sued, and because we are a private road, we had to pay. And we had to buy additional insurance since then. And it wasn't one of our neighbors that came and caused the accident. It was a boy from 185th driving an ATV from 188. So for all those here who are complaining, I would like to again say that we did not initiate this. We're trying to be good neighbors and share our traffic. We are not going to be doing a closing community like a lot of people are saying. This was meant to open us on one end while leaving the other end open. The north end is the only one that was supposed to be closed. The south end is still open. This is just so that we do not become the new through street from Griffin to Sheridan. Thank you.
Bob Bush, this is unnecessary. Anybody, any homeowners association can come in here and present their case to you, and you can decide whether it's a worthwhile project. That's your duty. They can run it through Andy, they can look at it too. You have a procedure that's just set up for homeowners? How about an individual? They're excluded. They may have a better idea than some homeowners association. But the fact is, you don't need it for an individual. You don't need it for a homeowners association or anybody else. You have the procedures already here to consider any option you want to consider. I don't know why we have to go through an additional procedure unless you're just creating a cloud. Thank you.
I kind of feel this thing is like Pandora's Box. When you open it up, I think you're really gonna turn a lot of stuff loose. If it says homeowners, it's easy to draw up an HOA. One street, all they have to do is get on Corporation, file it, and become a homeowners group. They don't have to be mandatory. They can be a homeowners group. The next thing is, you're addressing something, and whether or not they applied for or not, everybody has been here and heard this, repeated their problems. We've gone to meetings, we've, you know, it is what it is. It's designed to put a gate up at no cost to them. $40,000? I mean, Freddie asked for 10,000 so he can fix a park. We're gonna take my tax dollars and just do whatever these groups want to do. We have Deems Ranches, which is a private road, and I think there's enough houses in there, because we also have it written that you have to have so many houses in order to put a gate up. I think it's 30, but I'm not sure. There are streets that they might want blocked, a private road. They could approach you and say, you know, we want 10,000. This isn't a match, it's 40,000. And as far as having the responsibility of a private road, and therefore they can be sued, well, there is... well, there is a solution to that. Give up your land. I did. I gave up an acre and a half. I don't want to be responsible for a sterling road, and I don't want to be responsible for dykes. It's extremely busy. Somebody's gonna get killed, and they're gonna sue me because it's my property. So there are solutions, and I think this is Pandora's box, I really do. If you want to assist them, give them a grant. 5,000, they kick in 5. It's a match. You have it with the beautification, do it with this. If they don't like the idea of a gate, and they want the big metal ones that slide with clickers, then let them pay for it. I just have a real problem with us getting into this. And 40,000? Wow.
John Pepper, I live on 190th, Griffin 345. When I first moved into this town, before it was a town, a long time ago, when this thing started up about opening up 190th because there was problems here and there, and how we'd avoid traffic, I sent a letter to all the councilmen, I sent an email, so you got my email, to all the council members, said, "Look, we don't want to be a problem with your traffic, and we're not a problem with your traffic. Just close us all off and let us go in Griffin Road. Make us one-way, and that's fine. That way you can come in, you can look around, you can make sure we're not doing anything wrong. You can keep an eye on us, that's fine." Well, people don't want to do that. I don't know why they want to do it. I think Griffin 345 may be forward. The idea came up for the gate. The gate is our defense. You are opening up against our will, 190th. We are not going to allow your traffic from 190th to come into 345. If we have to dig it out with a D7, 4 feet deep, we are willing to work with you and let you, you know, the gate, I think, is a good idea. It's not the only idea. Close it off on the other end so no one has any reason to go down. As for 40,000? It's not gonna be 40,000. As for 5,000, that's also a joke. My gate and my house costs over 5,000. It ain't fancy. It's somewhere in between. But, you know, give up your 190th opening up, open it up to the fishing, or the park there, and forget about it. And then, as we've said, just let us be. We don't have that much traffic. Thank you.
Hi, Council, John Eastman, 188th Avenue. We started with traffic issues back before we were a town. From the year 2000 to about 2005, the nursery properties got a lot of speculators, and they were bought up, and we had a lot of nursery startups down there. They've morphed into other uses that are probably, most of them not approved. But we have properties being used for vehicle storage, landscaping, staging areas, trash hauling, on and on. The traffic on our streets is way beyond the design limits, way beyond the safe limits, and you're all aware of that. You've seen the numbers, they've had the traffic counters out there on more occasions. So it's up to the council to do something to protect the residents from this. In addition to the local-generated traffic, we have a lot of cut-throughs, especially on 185th, 186th Avenue. Because Newell Street got a gate. The streets further west got gates, they're all closed. And we are the first opening from US 27. So our volume has gone way up. You know it by the numbers. It's a problem you guys helped make by closing the streets out west. It's amazing that somebody who's gained the benefit from a gate can come here and, you know, tell you not to give somebody else the same benefit they've gotten. The situation with 345 is unique. They are a private community. For years, they were not an issue on our traffic. But as they got built out, they got 70 homes in there now. They've got a lot of service people that serviced those homes. It all comes in on 188th Avenue. So that further compounds our issue. The logical solution is get them open to 190th. Their local traffic can come in and out. The 63rd Street opening on the bottom will remain open. And if it does remain open, then that would make them a throughway. They have no speed bumps, no traffic calming, and they've got nice, wide, freshly paved roads. So where's the traffic gonna go? It's gonna go up their street, their private street. So it's a quagmire. It's a hard thing to solve. 40,000 seems like a lot for a gate, but then there is no specific community mentioned on this grant. So, you know, maybe some other areas can share in that. And as John Pepper said, the gate for 5,000 is not enough, but it's not gonna be 40. And, you know, a nice usable gate can be put in there. They'll take care of it after it goes in. Those homes back there, they're all on two-and-a-half acre lots. They're paying premium property taxes. They more than pull their weight in our town budget here. So, you know, this is some consideration for them. But it's also for the 185th, 186th, 188th residents. This is gonna lower our traffic volume and make all of our areas safe. I still can't let my kids go out on the bike on my street. It would be insanity. I'd go to jail if a policeman came down and saw them riding their bikes. So it's a hard choice. Maybe there's a better idea as a council, but we need some action. You got the grant to put the street in, so we need to figure out how to limit that traffic for the 345 area. You know, they're willing to go along with this, but we've gotta protect their interests as well. So somewhere in here, there's a compromise that's gonna work. Anyway, I hope you endeavor to solve it, and, you know, this is a good start. And they have to come back to you to get the grant. So, you know, this is just a mechanism in place that gives you an option. And I think it wouldn't hurt to have an option on the table. You can always say no. You can say, "Hey, that's too much, we're not giving you that much," or whatever. But let's give it a go. And this is like one of the last components to this traffic calming and plan to get this area at least somewhat more sane. You know, we can't stop the cut-through traffic, but we can certainly try to help out the local neighborhood here. Thank you.
Council, Joel Mainz, 4820 Southwest 188. Wow, this has been going on a long time, we all know that. Steve was in a homeowners, not on a council. I think there's only two council members here that were on here when we started all this and tried for, we've had speed bumps. Don't work. We are definitely looking for relief. I'll ditto with John. It is easy to be on a road who already has not a gate but a barrier. You got your relief. I'm happy for you. We are in a unique situation with their road, and I am for anything that you guys can do to get to alleviate the traffic on what it is. So then I can stay out of the road and put yell at people when the cops aren't around and go indoor to door. So, I mean, that's all I got. John touched base perfect. I agree with him, and...
Evening, Council. My name's John Worth, I do live on 188th Highway. I was on the original board for this traffic calming and everything back 14 or 15 years ago, and here we are, basically 15 years later. And actually, nothing's been accomplished with the 345 and 188 traffic problems. The plans are all laid out, and everything's getting ready to be put into effect. I think what we need to do at this time is to push forward and do something, even if it's wrong, sad to say that, and then we tweak it later. Let's get something accomplished out here for the people in 345, 188, 186, 185th Way. And so we can all be happy out there. As John Eastman so eloquently said, he basically gave, laid out all the synopsis to this. So I'm here for the closing. Putting a gate in, gate may not cost 40,000, 5,000, somewhere in between, between this grant and the beautification grants that we get, we should be able to put a gate in there. Hopefully, you all will see it that way too, and we can vote positively and move forward. Thank you.
Any additional public comment on this item? I see a gentleman working his way this way.
Wall Butler, Griffin 345. 40,000 seems like a lot of money. Not sure how many north, south streets we have along Griffin Road. But if we took that 40,000, we'd give everybody a gate. We'd effectively close our through traffic. And that's probably a whole lot cheaper than putting 184th in. So you know what? 40,000 might be a cheap way to go about doing this. And if everybody wants a gate, we all put the gates in place, we solve their traffic problem. That's all.
I can't believe these guys could ignore the possibility of 184th. We're all voters. They're gonna respond to voters if they act in unison. I don't see why we can't really put in the heat on the MPO to build 184th. To allow, which man who's the guy at Downey, to skate around that obligation. We should not allow that. I thought that that was gonna be one of the keys because they controlled, what, a third of that road, or contributed at least a quarter of that road? Why aren't we allowing them to avoid that for many years? They're gonna sell out and be out of there. To me, it looks like some kind of a fake. But really, you need 184th. The engineers say that, they said it millions of years ago. Everybody's been promised, and everybody in this room believes that's the ultimate answer. You hear it from everybody, and people that aren't here. And I think you all know that. Thank you.
No, that's 25 years from now, so... But anyway, any more public comment on this item? See, no further public comment. Public comment is closed. Turn it back over to you, Council, for final deliberation. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a few comments to make. And as I make these comments, obviously, I've picked up on the feelings of the council. But I've got a few more comments to make, and as I make them, my challenge to you is to recognize that there's a need out there. And if this isn't the answer, then I need your help in coming up with an answer. Okay? So I just, I throw that out there to be thinking about, that maybe we can have a little discussion after I get done, to see if this isn't it, what is it? Because these folks, these folks need some help. I want to go back and talk a little bit about the history of this. I first ran for office in 2002. And one of the biggest issues that I had, my discussions when I talked to neighbors and the community and things, understanding, one of the biggest issues that came up over and over again was the through traffic and the excessive traffic on 188th, 185th, 186th. We're still there. However, I do want to say, so there's a tendency, you know, I could throw out there that we've made no progress in all that time, but that's not true. But the progress that we've made has not relieved traffic, but we have made progress. And the progress is, is that what you see out there are residents of 185th, 186th, 188th, and 190th, all coming together, saying that this is something that will help us. And we've never really been able to do that before. We've always had kind of conflict there on how to handle this. And so I'm proud of the community that's here tonight, and I wanted to express that because you're hearing what I'm hearing, that this is still a challenge for us. But I'm proud that you all are here, and I'm proud that, you know, you're speaking together to try and work out something. And so here we are, basically 13 years later from when I first started having conversations about that. And we've made a lot of progress in coming towards a consensus on how to deal with this. We've finally arrived at a plan that the community as a whole out there can agree upon. And what we're down to is, I haven't heard anybody, well, I shouldn't say that. I have heard some issues about the gate itself, yes, I have. But I've also heard things about the funding of the gate. And so to address those issues, I think from a funding standpoint, I heard a little bit that perhaps if it was some sort of a matching grant, that might be a little bit more, you know, reasonable and agreeable. I've heard that gates as a whole are not something that are overly appealing. But I want to be clear that this does not make 345 a gated community. It makes it, if this is a gated community, then 195th is a gated community, and Rolling Oaks is a gated community. What this would make it is a one-way-in, one-way-out community. 63rd would be wide open to 190th. You could come in, you could go out. So I want to clear that up. This would not be making a gated community. You know, we have, we're in a difficult situation where we are right now because we have the funds and really to appoint the obligation to complete 190th. And Keith, I would like your opinion. We've bantered this around, and right now, there are barricades, basically, on the north end of 190th where the FPNL easement is and all that. The road is not built. I would like to know for the record, once this road is built, can those barriers be put back up?
The grant agreement that you sign requires the road to be constructed. There is nothing that would prohibit you from closing it after construction. That would be a determination of the council. It's a little disingenuous to the state, but there's no legal requirement or impediment for you to do that.
Okay. You say it would take action by the council? That's a private road. Could the HOA themselves do that?
I'd have to see exactly what you're referring to on a map. But if it's a, I'd have to see exactly what you're referring to.
Okay, well, we need to do some research on that. I will tell you that if we can, if that HOA is not allowed to put up barricades up there, then we should not be building that road because that was not the agreement. I mean, you know, Gary, that would be like building 178 through to Sheridan. Those people didn't move out there with that intention. And the, that whole, that portion of it was part of a bigger plan. And to do half of it and not do the other half, the only way I could, you know, that should be done is if they can block off that road. And so we need to find that out. I need to know that very quickly. Keith?
If someone had a map here, I'd be able to, but absolutely, we can sit and go over that, and we'll have the answer before next meeting. But regardless, you signed a grant agreement, you've accepted funds, the road has to be built.
Yeah, well, I understand. I'm not saying that. All I'm saying is it needs to be blocked off once it's built.
The town can block off its own portion of the road if it so chooses. You understand that. The town...
I understand that. I understand that. But I don't know what the will of the council is on blocking off that road. What I do know is I know the will of the HOA is to...
Are you referring to 345?
Yes, I am.
Okay, that's where we were confused. I wasn't sure if you were talking about 345.
I'm talking about 345.
So your question is...
And I don't want to speak for them, but I want them to hear this discussion. Straight, I don't want that to be interpreted through me. I want to, I want to...
The question now makes more sense to me because I thought there might have been another community out there, that's why I turned to Russell and Adam. So your question is whether or not Griffin 345 can close... So your question is whether or not Griffin 345 can close off its own a, access at a certain location?
Correct.
Griffin 345 is fully private roads. If it's the will of their HOA, their HOA documents and their legal counsel tells them they're able to do so, they can do so. We don't have a say over that particular area.
Okay, good, good, good. Uh, I wanted to talk a little bit about the amount of the, uh, that was put there on this particular item, the forty thousand, just where that came from. The, where that came from was that the, to build the three gates out west on 199, 202, and 205 was about, was just under a hundred thousand dollars. So it was, it was a little, it was about a little over thirty thou, like, on thirty-two thousand dollars a gate. There were some dollars that were, uh, you know, economies of scale. We did three at one time, so there were some things there that saved money. So to do one individual gate, um, I felt of a similar, of a similar fashion that forty thousand dollars was a safe number to cover the cost. Um, the, the cost there was never intended to cover any ongoing maintenance or anything like that. It was a, a one-time build cost. If the cost came in under forty thousand dollars, then it wasn't a blank check for forty thousand dollars. It was up to forty thousand dollars to build the gate. So it could be less than that. That was, that was the plan. But I wanted to give some feedback on where that number came from. It wasn't just, uh, it wasn't just pulled out of the air. And, uh, I guess the last thing that I want to say is kind of backing up a comment that Ophelia said, that this gate, um, was not the idea or the proposal of 345. They, they didn't, they, they didn't say, hey, you know, Steve, we want, we want a gate there. And that's why, you know, can you come up with a way to fund this gate for us? They, because of, and rightfully so, I'm not throwing any stones. They, because of some of the history that, or it was brought up here tonight, of being sued, they are very hesitant to make any changes at all out there. And, um, that, uh, this is really something that, uh, the genesis came from the surrounding streets of 185th, 186th, and 188th. And they're the ones that are really seeing the benefit of it. I think that the, it's important to remember that, um, that when we did close off 205, 202, and 199th, which I think was absolutely the right thing to do, that we did push more traffic over to 185th, 186th, and 188th. That's just the nature of traffic. And so, um, you know, I am disappointed. I understand where people are coming from, but I am disappointed that people that have gained benefit from having those gates there don't understand or aren't willing to lend support for those folks where some of their traffic has moved too. And, um, you know, we're, we're one community and, uh, and so I'm disappointed in that. But I understand where you're coming from and, uh, and, uh, but it's, you know, traffic flows like water. What, the path of least resistance is how it goes. So it's, it's one community. I, I would like to see us come up with something. Something that, uh, you know, like I said, may, maybe a matching, maybe lower the amount. Certainly, uh, you know, this is going to be something that is not a blank check. It's going to come back to the council anyway. This is just setting up a structure. And so, um, while this item is, is on the, on the table, I, I've done a lot of talking. I've done a lot of talking on this item for years. And, um, I would really like to get some feedback from you all so that if this does not fly tonight, um, it's not going to just be a dead issue. You know, this is still an issue that we're all going to be working on out there. And I, and I need some feedback. I don't want to keep bringing things to the council that are going to be, um, dead issues, you know? I want to bring something back that we can get behind and we can, we can resolve this issue. So I'm, I'm going to shut up and, and I'd really like to get some feedback from the council.
Freddie had it said, and then I'll get to you, Doug.
Yeah, Steve, like, what I would say, we need to set a policy for the town. And putting the gate up is not the policy I want to see set. I would support them a hundred percent, one-way in, one-way out. I think that's, we got it in other places. And I think that's a theme we're going to have to support in this town, not gates. And if they want to do that, I'll support it a hundred percent where they got, same thing Rolling Oaks has got. I personally kind of got it because I'm on the Indefinite Pines. I got to go north to get out, but I don't have that traffic. But I think that that's the route we should be taking to this town. It's something we can hold all over the town. You know, whenever the one over there, when we fought that gate they were going to put in, lost my gardens, you know, they were saying. But anyway, I would, I would support that. I would support one-way in, one-way out.
Yeah, a couple of things. A starting point. Let me back up Freddie. First of all, is I'd support that also. I also had residents from Flat 345 call me and said they, they would support that. So I just want that on record. The backup part is, is that we've been given the money. We have the ability to build the road. We need to close 54th and 57 and then put, do a study out there on traffic or whatever. You got to get, get a starting point. So to get where we're going right now, get the road in, close others off, and then let's see where the traffic goes and what happened. If we need to come back and readdress something, close 63rd and make it one-way in and one-way out, you're done. I mean, ultimately. So I'm not saying not do something. Let us move forward and get this part done and let's come back and let's monitor it. But let's do something. So to have the money given to us and have the grant money and be able to do that and be able to take an action and not it costs us anything, we'd be out of our mind not to do it.
Well, I think we're doing that.
Well, we should be doing that.
Yeah, well, we are, we are.
So I would say, moving forward, I would support you in finding another resolution, but at least let's get that far and get some relief and see what happens and where that goes. Whether they end up wanting to get a gate or whether they close 63rd down or whatever it is. But let's take an action and do something and then readdress it again. So I'm there with you on that part. I, I'm not supporting you on the grant for the gate at this, at this time, though. Or, or a grant.
Listen, I, I second it because I think this is obviously important discussion. Abs, absolutely. There used to be a lot of complaints, you know, about 345 cutting through. And so, um, a lot of discussion how to fix it, how to reconcile it. So make a long story short, and John, you hit it right on the head. I mean, I, I absolutely agree with you a hundred percent. So what we're saying is they need to handle that traffic. Let's open up 190th, but let's not provide them with any, any protection. That just doesn't make any sense to me whatsoever. And it's wrong. It absolutely is, is wrong. That's not fair. You know, finally, you come up with a mechanism to get some relief because of 345 and the cut through because that's the only way they could go. They've agreed to it, but now we're opening up 190th and not giving them any, any protection. It just doesn't make sense and it's certainly not, not fair. Listen, I can think of others. I, I like the concept of this, uh, this safety grant. Here's one of the reasons why. There's others out there. Listen, I lived in Ivanhoe Estates for years. Lot of issues out there with, with security. Poor guy across the street lost two trucks in six months. What did they do? They put up, um, cameras, you know, to try and mitigate or stop. They either dismantled the cameras, they put tape over the cameras, and they weren't able to do anything about it. Here's a mechanism potentially that could give them some relief. What that is, I'm not sure, but I think it's a wonderful opportunity potentially to give them some relief. You know, Rolling Oaks, one-way in and, uh, and one-way out. Is there something potentially that we could be creative with that helps them? I know that, uh, you know, I don't know with cameras, I don't know. Some additional deterrent with regards to this safety grant. It provides a mechanism, mechanism to do that. It just doesn't seem fair that, uh, you know, complained about the traffic of 345 going, um, going, going west and impacting 188, 185, and, uh, and 186. And finally, we got a mechanism to address it. Everybody's on, I shouldn't say everybody's on board, but they've agreed to do that to mitigate, uh, that, uh, traffic movement in that direction. We're opening up and we're not providing them any, any protection. That's wrong. I think that that absolutely is, uh, is wrong. So, um, again, I'm not sure what the answer is. And I hear what you're saying, Steve, to put the barriers up there, but that doesn't make sense. You build a new, uh, road, you address the situation, but then we close it off and then the whole scenario exists again with regards to where that traffic goes, which was a, uh, which was a concern amongst, um, many of you. And the fact that we're sitting here having this conversation, and again, we're all residents of the town of Southwest Ranch, it's not one against the, the other. You know, we're all looking to try and come up with, uh, with a mechanism to address it. Listen, 185th, 186th, we talked about this before. Honestly, I don't have any problems potentially putting up a gate up there. We've got plenty of cut-through traffic potential. It doesn't adversely impact our, uh, our residents. Think about that. I mean, from Griffin Road to 27, all in between, Volunteer, Dykes, 172nd. You know, 172nd, unfortunately, on the, uh, on the east side, there are, there are homes. But there's many opportunities to direct traffic where it doesn't impact our neighborhoods. And I got to tell you that maybe this is a mechanism that we can use to come up with a plan to maybe close, uh, close that off so it's not, uh, cut-through traffic. So I see this as an opportunity. I see this, uh, this grant, I see this as an opportunity. I see this as an opportunity to have a conversation. I see this as, uh, an opportunity to potentially come up with some, some solutions. And not only for, uh, 345 and 190th, but other areas in this town is, uh, as well. So I am inclined to, uh, support this as a mechanism for funding. And again, not just out there, but, uh, the other organizations that exist that don't necessarily have a traffic problem, but have issues with, uh, access and, uh, you know, people, um, you know, and, uh, and crime and, uh, and theft. And again, I, I use, uh, I'm not there anymore, but I use Ivanhoe Estates as an example. You know, there's a lot of issues out there. And they tried to address it by putting up cameras and it didn't, uh, didn't work. My poor neighbor across the street, like I told you, lost two trucks in, uh, in six months. So I'm inclined to support this. I think this is, uh, a mechanism that'll generate, uh, discussion. I think it has the potential to come up with, uh, some, um, plans to address not only this situation, but other situations, uh, that exist in this, uh, in this town. And, um, anything we can do to provide relief for our residents so that they're not, uh, being adversely impacted by, uh, cut-through traffic. And it generates a discussion to address that. I am absolutely all for it and supportive of it. Gary?
Thank you, Mayor. Lot to think about. This, uh, came up about two weeks ago and it was really the first time I really looked at it with a dollar amount. And I got to be real honest with you, I went into sticker shock. Big time. And, uh, thought a lot about it and have some concerns, some, some big concerns. Recognizing the fact that 188th would probably be the main beneficiary of this, that's a big plus in my mind, a very large plus. And to, uh, probably to another extent, 186th and 185th. Where I have some problems with this, Stephen, I got to tell you, right, as it's written, I, I, I don't support as it's written right now.
Okay.
All right. Here's, but here's what I can support.
Okay.
I can support a lesser amount.
Okay.
I can support a match.
Okay.
A fifty-fifty match or something to that effect where when a, I'm going to use the Rolling Oaks wall as an example, the famous wall. We got a grant for, I forgot what it was, thirty-five hundred dollars, something to that effect. But the wall costs like nine, ten thousand dollars. It wiped Rolling Oaks out to pay for that wall. We, the community, put in the balance and, and then some, and we still are. In other words, we own that wall.
Right.
And we take care of it. We take care of the, the landscaping, we take care of the lighting, we take care of whatever. I mean, because we have ownership in it. And, and the town didn't just build it for us, you know, that kind of thing. And I think that's lacking in this.
Okay.
Because I don't see any way that an HOA would take any kind of ownership. And, and this could be spread out over multiple HOAs. I, I recognize that. We're not just talking Griffin 345 here. But I, I see those two as major stumbling blocks, the amount. I, I was, you know, after a lot of thought for the last two weeks, I, I, something along twenty-five percent of this. Uh, if it was ten thousand, it would probably be a whole lot more palatable with a required match by, uh, a, any winning-ish HOA. And maybe this is something that's not feasible because it may be spread out over multiple HOAs, which wouldn't make it significant enough. I don't know, like, like suggested cameras, uh, license plate readers, uh, at Rolling Oaks at the, uh, you know, because we have the one-way in, one-way out. And people, believe me, that is a big advantage to neighborhood security, having one-way in and one-way out. And, um, that's something I can get behind. And I realize this is probably going to be a work in progress. But we've got to, we've got to move in some direction.
Right.
I just can't support this the way this is written right now. If we want to modify it here tonight, you know, that's, that's, let's keep talking.
Okay.
Would you, would you support twenty thousand?
Well, I said twenty-five.
Twenty-five percent, or twenty-five thousand? I thought you said twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent.
So you're talking about ten thousand dollars.
If, so...
Steve?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So I'm wondering, um, I, I appreciate the con, the feedback from, from all the council. So bearing in mind that as far as the gate considerations, this is not... I mean, I, I don't want to be deceptive. I don't want to, I, I want to be open and say, yeah, clearly, this was designed for the first project. I was hoping that 345 would apply and I would hope that it would go towards the gate. So I don't want to be, I'm not trying to be deceptive here. But I do want to reiterate what Keith said at the very beginning, that this particular, um, item is to put a mechanism in place. It's, we, if we were, if, whatever it went to, it would have to come before the council again to approve it. So, um, so at that point, you know, maybe it would be a gate, maybe it would be closing off the road. I don't know what it'll be, you know? Clearly, we're going to have to go back and, and do some more work. So...
Let, let me jump in and remind you of one thing. If they had the money to do it themselves, they need a unanimous vote from here to get that passed.
That's not true.
No, that's not true.
I thought it was a private road.
Nope, it's true.
It's not true. It's not a fully gated community.
It's not, it's not a gated community.
It's still, if they all leave the back open.
If they leave the back open, which has always been the plan.
Okay.
That's always been the plan, is to leave the back open. I, I thought I said, made that clear, but let me, if it wasn't clear, let me be absolutely clear. This is not going to make it a gated community. This is going to be wide open from 63rd. You can come in on 185th, 186th, 188th, come down to 63rd and get onto 190th, not have to go through a gate at all. But, uh, so, um, to, as far as the vote is tonight, this is to put a mechanism in place. So it has nothing to do with the gate. If, if it came to you later on as a gate and you wanted to turn it down based on your comments, I would understand what you're, where you're coming from. But that's not what we're really voting on tonight. Uh, Gary, to kind of, um, let, let me just, yeah, so... I appreciate your feedback. I, I, I'm wondering if we can compromise on a fifty percent match on twenty thousand to, so that we could get to the forty thousand to do the project. Once again, hopefully, it would be less than that because hopefully, the project would be more along the lines of thirty-five, thirty-six thousand dollars to get an equivalent gate. So the town cost would be more like around eighteen, but I don't, you know, the commitment would be up to twenty. But a fifty percent match, um, to split between the two. And then, you know, it would be up to myself and, and the community to try and figure out a way to come up with that other match.
Another question.
Yeah.
Is this every year or one time?
I think that what this does is it puts it in place as a tool that would be set up every year. Now, whether we funded it every year or not, that would be, it's up to council when budget time comes around.
And just for the record, uh, because I want to just get it clear, you'd like to make an amendment to your motion to approve, to modify it to a, to reduce the fifty, the forty thousand dollars down to twenty thousand with the requirement of a minimum of up to fifty percent match because in all likelihood, it's going to exceed that in most cases.
Right.
So, uh, a minimum of at least a fifty percent match.
That's correct.
And if that's the amendment, uh, Mayor, do you renew your second on that amendment?
I, I don't have a, a problem with that, just a, just a couple of, uh, comment. And I don't have problems with the, honestly, with the forty thousand dollars. You know, because, uh... You know, 'cause this is a grant that, you know, we're talking about safety and safe neighborhoods. Any residential area that has significant cut through traffic is potentially a safety issue, you know? And again, it's just not with regards to opening up 190th. We know the areas that exist out there. So, if there's a mechanism to have a discussion to address some of those, not only this, but the other areas as well, I am all for it. I don't have problems with $40,000. And I don't have problems with a 50% match. I think that, you know, there is the potential that you have some homeowners associations or others that would certainly contemplate taking us up on that deal. And like you said, I can think of other areas, like, you know, Ivenhoe Estates and, you know, Rolling Oaks potentially to, you know, when you go in there, it's one way in, one way out. We all confirm that there is a significant advantage to that. But I can tell you, one way ins and one way outs don't absolutely ensure that you're not gonna have issues of people going in there and committing crimes. And again, the perfect example, I lived there for 17 years, is Ivenhoe Estates. And that's on top of poles and cameras that are recording all traffic going in and out of there, you know? So, I don't, this comes before the council anyway. If it's $40,000 and, you know, we agree to 10, or there are projects that are five, or it could be more, it could be less. Ultimately, this council decides. They make the determination, they make their own evaluation, and they decide whether they wanna fund it or not, if it, the shipping appropriation or not. Is it something, a mechanism that we want to entertain as part of this process to address some of these traffic issues? Again, it's a safety grant, okay? Safety grant. Cars, lots of cars transitioning through our neighborhoods is unsafe, okay? It's unsafe, plain and simple. And there's a lot of opportunity to traverse our town without having an adverse impact on our residential neighborhoods. We've talked about this before. We've talked about this many, many times, and I think we all agree with that, that there are a lot of areas that are unsafe. And there's a lot of opportunities for cut through traffic that don't adversely impact our neighborhoods. So, I don't have any problems with the $40,000. If we don't want to spend it, we don't have to. If we don't think the projects are legitimate, we can turn them down. And I don't have any problem if this is going to pass to, you know, incorporate the 50% match. I don't have any problem with that, but I think this is something that's important. I think it's a mechanism that potentially could lead into other things that'll help our residents, 'cause I can think of a lot of other areas out there, and I don't see anything, anything wrong with this. Again, you open up 190th and then you tell them, you know, you know, cut through traffic, that's not fair. It's not fair. It absolutely is not fair. And they went ahead and did that because of the traffic. It was going through 345 on 188th, 186th, 185th, and the other, and the other area. It's just not fair. You know, you can't have it, you can't have it both ways. So, Freddie?
Steve, how would this gate work?
What's that?
How would the gate work? Would it be, you know, if you're coming out of that, is it gonna be free or you're gonna...
So, the, the original plan on the gate, bearing that we're not voting on the gate tonight, but just to answer your question. So, there would be open access from the south, no gate. On the north side of 190th, there would be a gate that would have restricted access both ways. So, you would need, whether it's a clicker or whether it's a barcode or whatever, that hasn't been decided. But you would need to stop at the gate and let the gate open regardless of whether you're going north or south. Only individuals that live in that area would have the access to go through that gate. Other folks that are outside the area would have to come out on the other way where there is not the gate. The key there is that because there is no free access either way, that all of that nursery traffic and all the through traffic that comes up from the south, you know, they may take one trip up to the gate and then realize it's closed, and then they're not gonna do it anymore. And so, they won't have the through traffic, they won't have the back and forth traffic. But it will allow all that traffic that's in 345 on 190th to access directly to Griffin Road and take all that load off of 188. That's, that's the design.
In other words, it's gonna be, the gate going north would be a gate also. Some of those gates going north, you can get out, but you can't get in.
Right. This one would be restrictive both directions.
Mayor, if I may? You know, I know we have the power and the ability to approve a grant of this nature and caliber, but because the way we're setting it up and the use and what we're dictating it can be used for, you know, me personally, I'd rather see you put it on a ballot and let the residents vote if they want us to create a grant like this. You're taking public money for private use technically. I know it's for HOAs, I know we're setting it up, but I just gotta tell you, I have a bad feeling on taking this avenue when you can put it on the ballot in two years. So, that's how I feel about it.
Like I said, I don't have any, I don't have any problem with this. I don't have any problem with this. You know, it just makes sense. And finally, there's a mechanism in place so we can continue our discussion to talk about some of the areas in this town that we're concerned about with regards to cut through traffic. This is wonderful. This is absolutely wonderful. You know, I love this, this opportunity to give our residents, you know, some potential relief. And now, this is a mechanism to be able to do that. We talked about it for, forever, okay? And again, traffic cutting through our neighborhoods is a safety issue, you know? Everybody out here is adversely impacted by that. That's why you're here. And this gives us a mechanism to address it. We don't have to talk about how or whatever. Just come up with some proposals, some ideas, you know, potential projects and not only address the 190th issue. Again, they agreed to do that finally, yet we're telling them that, you know, we can't protect them. That's wrong. Absolutely is wrong. But now, we have a mechanism. And I don't have any problems with the $40,000 because ultimately, it has to come before this council for approval anyway. But we finally have a mechanism. It's a safety grant. And there are other areas in this, this, this town that could potentially benefit by this. And I am sure that those areas that could potentially benefit by this, you're gonna have them come in and having discussions and a constructive conversation with not only Andy, with, with other staff members to start addressing some of those issues and concerns. And I think this is a wonderful opportunity to do that. I think this is a wonderful mechanism to, to address it. And that's why I don't have any issues with it.
Mayor, you said, when you called me up to ask me a question on 185th, you said something to me, but it wasn't heard in the public on how you were trying to bridge the gap. So, I just wanna make sure you knew that it wasn't public.
No, 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 absolutely. It's, it's part of our conversation was to limit, limit the projects to $20,000. And my response to Keith was, is that if we come up with a mechanism to give other areas and our residents relief that potentially could be more than that, I just don't wanna limit it. I wanna make sure that we have the flexibility to do what we knew and evaluate the projects, you know, on their, on their own merits. And that was the reason why I didn't want to limit it to, to that amount, Keith. It just ties our, ties our hand potential. I mean, we, obviously, we can undo it as a council to change the policy, but I, I don't, I don't have any, I don't have any problems with this. I don't have any problems with this. You can say no. You don't have to spend anything, you know? But at least it's a mechanism in place that not only do we address 199th, but all the other areas with this cut through traffic potentially. It's a wonderful opportunity. Again, you can say no. You don't have to fund any of them. But at least we have a mechanism in place, at least we can talk about it. Those in these areas that are adversely impacted by cut through traffic, now they can say, wow, you know, here's potentially an opportunity to, to address it. I think it's fantastic. I think it's a, a great idea. I don't have any issues with it. Freddie?
Yeah, my, I just wanna get understanding what we're talking about. We're understanding to set up a grant program for our town for safety reasons.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And under this grant program, is it gonna stipulate, where is the matching grant?
If, if that's what it takes, and I'm seeing yes, yes. 50% matching grant, Freddie, as...
Well, that's what, when I wanna do this, I wanna, all the things, I'd like Keith to...
Okay. Yeah, I, I just wanna explain this, 'cause that's why I asked the mayor the question on the record, because we actually don't have a second. Because what essentially occurred is Councilmember Bright Cruz changed his motion to reduce the 40,000 down to 20 and require a 50% match. The mayor came back and said, no, I think it should remain $40,000 and allow it to be up to the discretion of the council to determine how that money should, should give. So, I just wanna make sure that, that everyone knows where, where it stands right now.
That's where, that's where I have the issue. You're limited, you know? And again, it's limited anyway because ultimately, we approved the expenditure in the project. We don't have to spend $1, but at least you have a mechanism. And if it's going to get the support of at least three council members and we need to put a stipulation in there, 50% match, I don't have any problem with that. But I just don't want to, to limit it because I can assure you that when, when these areas find out about the potential, maybe start addressing some of these cut through significant safety and traffic concerns, that there's gonna be a lot more discussion about, about this. But if it gets passed by incorporating the 50%, and you don't have any problems, Steve or Gary, a 50% match, I don't have any problems with that. I don't like the $20,000, because I think that it limits, limits it. Ultimately, we can, we can change that. And again, if it's $40,000, we don't have to spend one penny because ultimately, this council decides if it's a worthy project and it's worth, worth funding. So, from my perspective, leave it at $40,000 with a 50% match, that's my feeling. That's how, that's how I feel.
Steve, if you want my opinion, I'm for a grant with no match.
Grant with no match.
Ah, God, listen, fantastic. That's it. A grant with no match, we'll keep it at 40,000. We have a motion in the second to approve this.
No, no, you're gonna have to redo everything, 'cause you don't have a motion on the table right now.
I thought we have a motion in the second to approve this resolution.
Well...
Oh, no, no, he withdrew it though to make a motion, but he can redo it right now.
So, Freddie, Freddie, are you okay with the 40,000?
Me, yeah.
Yeah.
But I'm just no match. It has to be literally no match.
Fine. So, it would be a motion to approve the resolution.
Then I'm gonna withdraw my amendment.
You're already generous. So, so, one second, 'cause Russell and I are going crazy trying to figure this out.
We're back to the original motion.
Okay, so, Councilmember Bright Cruz would like to make a motion to approve the resolution as written. Is there a second?
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any additional questions, comments, or concerns, council? Russell, call the question, please.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
No.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
No.
Vice Mayor Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Item number nine. Russell?
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending Resolution Number 2015-002, the Town Council meeting scheduled for the calendar year 2015, by rescheduling the September 10th, 2015 Town Council meeting to September 15th, 2015, and rescheduling the September 24th, 2015 Town Council meeting to September 29th, 2015, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Russell. Andy?
Yeah, Mayor, this is, as we discussed at the last council meeting, some changes due to the budget calendar and what we can do in September. Marty went through a presentation for you last month, we all talked about it. This just ratifies the decision the council made.
Thank you, Andy. Counsel?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve. Any members of the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing no public comment, public comment is now closed. Again, we have a motion in the second to approve. Any additional questions, comments, or concerns, council? Seeing none, Russell, call the question, please.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes, item number 10.
This is just an item for the Broward League of Cities to appoint a voting delegate and an alternate.